And I call a meeting back to order and that brings us to item number five point one. The paid principles policy and that will be presented by.
Through the chair to members of council, I will turn this over to Nikia. As we only have her for another twenty five minutes and she'll have to go, so we'll. We'll let her take the rain going. If there is any follow up questions after she leaves, I'm sure I can, I can handle them.
Yes, thank you, everyone, so. Following, sorry, I thought I'd be more prepared, but I was really interested with our C P R C. Um, so we before you is an updated pay principal policy. Um, it is looking specifically to enhance. Information around how cola is. Certain budget and to what percentile we should target for our non union and. By such a means we just. So I'm here if you have any questions or required.
Council.
Um, counselor through the chair, if I, if I may, just to add a little bit on to that. So as a part of the. Record, we identified the the options going from the fiftieth, the sixtieth, seventieth. Then seventieth and seventy fifth percentile with the associated costs related to those specific percentiles. Now, there is some nuance with along with this policy that council should be be made aware of. Um, it is much easier to increase somebody's rate than it is to. Make their their wage lower. And so there are some implications. So although in some of these options, we can increase. The wages that are below and at a quicker rate, it does take some time to. To look at options of. Bringing the. The positions that are over that specific percentile back into alignment. So that does take a lot of time. You know, and we do as a part of this policy, we do identify that we have. Two different sides of the organization, one union, one non-union. I think. You know what we're trying to accomplish with this policy is that we want to treat everybody across the organization. And so whatever we do, we want to make sure that we don't do it at the same time. Understanding there is a collective agreement that is in place until twenty twenty six. So many of these changes. Depending on our conversation may have to be. You know, we would recommend that we wait until until that collective bargaining. Process does reoccur in twenty twenty six. So that was my.
Thank you. Uh, and with that counselor Taylor.
If we were to pick, say, the sixtieth percentile as a pay target. I would probably then ask you to come up with an implementation plan for that over a long period of time. How long period of time do you think you would need? Like, I would think it took us ten years to get to this point. It might take us ten years to get back to sixtieth percentile or something.
Yeah, I can, I can take that. It wouldn't be a rough estimate, but it would be a long time here because the method in which you would achieve that for. People who weren't in the unionized group would be red circling. So it would just be, you wouldn't be, you wouldn't receive that one percent increase of that five. That point five percent increase. So that's how you really slowly bring it. Really, really slowly bring it down. And then for the unionized, it would probably be the same. Thing, but more more risky because you'd be looking at trying to negotiate zeros over. Substantial or consecutive collective agreements to get from the seventieth to the sixtieth. And you may never achieve that. So then you might still have one segment of your organization that's at one higher level. So it would take a very, very long time.
Right. And I don't think it would be practical for me to sit here and think about all the ways in which that could be done. It would be better that I asked you to do that. If we can pick a number. Over whatever period of time it is reasonable.
Yeah. So is it administration's intention based on that conversation of how? It's not so hard going up. It's the going back part is that I'm moving forward. Anything over that seventy five percentile? We would leave alone at this point potentially. And then when, when any of that position would come, then we would look at adjusting it then is that? How would that play out into the into the policy if that's?
So if we know that seventy fifth is it, then we we do look at strategies if anyone's over to slowly bring them back. And for some it might happen quickly because there might be a vacancy and then we can adjust the wage at that moment. For others, it might be rolled back for some. Um, it might not necessarily be something we can do until the report tos. There we just come down to, or else we're looking at supervisors, managers, making the same as or less. Report. So there's a few factors that we would have to look at and consider in an implementation process.
Okay, I'll ask an easy question then. On page one of the report, it says you need twenty six thousand to bring four positions up competitive compensation. Uh, this cost can be offset in the current twenty twenty three budget. So is it in the budget or are you offsetting with something in the budget?
Uh, through the chair, the members of council. So we just found out. I believe last week that we were not successful in getting the municipal intern. Uh, so we had, I think approximately thirty. Thirty four thousand dollars for that position. Depending so that we could offset that twenty six with that. That position.
Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? Counselor Taylor.
This is this proposed policy. Two point three point one. Is he a ten intent here to provide this? Consumer price index and the cost of living increase to both union and non-union staff?
So it's. The union have their own process and that's through the collective negotiation. That's how they're. Their percentage is achieved. So this the.
This would be not. Excellent. Sorry, dumb question.
No questions.
Okay, go ahead. Through the chair, if I may, I can just cut on that clause because this policy really has two. Um, material aspects to it. One is the percentile that counts wants to target for. Uh, compensating our employees. And the other one is how we want to look at developing. Cost of living allowances for staff. The in the policy, the ultimate approval comes when budget is approved. But how we bring it forward should be transparent and it should be based on some kind of policy through council. So what we're recommending is. Whatever the Alberta uh consumer price index is in that year. Uh, we would bring that forward, uh, understanding there's a. A basement and a ceiling, uh, zero and five percent. It has to be within that range. And what we would do is take the Alberta C P I. Uh, divide that by the negotiated increase of the union and whatever wherever we sit on that scale is what it would be. So. Um, we would divide that by essentially two percents.
I thought, doesn't it say you add them together?
The average, we're looking at the average.
Okay. That would not be good, actually.
So like if C P C P I was four percent and the union was.
Two percent and me three percent. All right, thank you. Counselor or Mayor Michael, sorry, you got into motion.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, is it administration's preference? To. Uh, or what is administration's preference when it comes to adopting a new pay principles policy? To take the draft one that you're proposing and kind of. Go through it and chop what we don't like, add what? Other stuff or hypothetically, if there is just a number, we don't want to really change much from the old policy. To just put verbiage to say whatever number sixty seventy, whatever percent like percentile to target. And just add it to the first because I see two ways to approach this. Um, because there may not be total support for everything in the new draft one. What what's the preference? And I kind of asked at the council, do we, you want to hash out the new policy or? Do we uh want to take the old one and add to it? Because there there's. Certain things in the new draft one that I don't necessarily want in there. So I just want to save us some time.
It's at your discretion, the the new policy I I did a read or the draft policy that's before you guys. Um, I did a very comprehensive review of um several municipalities policies. And it really had the gaps of the ones that we had compared to this. And that was just. No transparent and consistent mechanism for requestable increase and uh the. The lack of perception.
And and I guess I'll make a. A a comment and then ask a question. When I read this, essentially what it says to me is we've been paying at the seventy five percentile for long enough. That it'd be too complicated to unwind it now. And so we just have to keep doing that. The union guys paid at that. So we're gonna start paying staff for that. So we just gotta do this. So the elected people go back and tell everyone that we pay at the seven fifth percentile. And from that, then I guess my question is, it would be complicated. And if it took ten years, I mean. And 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 I don't think it's reasonable to even contemplate going to people and say, we've got to cut your salary because council set the the target at sixty. But when you're rehiring that position. And 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 I guess this now goes back into this discussion of we're going to get a consultant in, we're going to pay him. Uh, what we budgeted sixty thousand to do our so. And then we go back and we say, well, that person was formerly paid at seventy five. Sixty is our target right now. So now all of a sudden, for for a long time, we're going to have positions that are. Out of whack with one another, but. Is that a, is that a situation? That. Is doable or? Are we actually bound? From here to hell freezes over to pay at the seventy fifth percentile?
Uh, the chair, I I can take this one. I your comments are. Are accurate. It's not that we can't go with a different percentile, but there are significant risks um associated with that. Whether we're we're going to be able to without avoiding some of those organizational risks, uh, we don't know at this point, but I think the. The main. Part here is that because we have two different sides of the organization. One, we have very little control over changing and one we do. Um, we do not want to be changed one just because we have the ability to do that. Number one, that drives people into a unionized environment. And I don't. I don't know if we wanted to do that. I think we want to treat everybody equitably. And I think that's um. True across the board. Uh, the complications on. Pulling back into a different percentile is going to. Really. Pose risks when we have that discussion with the union and whether when somebody leaves, I'm going to be hired if we could do it out of lower position. Whether we can negotiate zero percent increases. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of uh risks involved in. In uh having to do that with the union environment. And if we only do it for the non-union. We just compound the internal compression issues that we already have. Um, and I think that, you know, we're not, we're not abiding by treating everybody across the organization.
Um, that's essentially it. And and the positions that we would be looking at being able to reduce are generally the supervisory positions, those core meter positions. So they'll see other coordinators who are making ten fifteen percent more than them. And they'll see that their report twos are making the same and not more than them. If the difference is. Seventy fifth percentile or sixtieth. There's more ability if you go from like the seventy fifth to the seventieth. Um, the impact is a little less, but what what happens again is essentially the union wages are uncreating the floor. And so we're reducing the supervisors and the managers. Then. They're making the same as or less than equipment. Not in every case, but that's our that's our major challenge.
I think it was a chair. Um, I'd like to actually put a direction on the floor and begin at least uh one part of it. Uh, that committee amend. Section two point two. Of the of the. Of the the new proposed. That doesn't have to be in there, but two point two of the pay principal policy. To read. The town targets. Pay. At the seventy fifth percentile. Or sixtieth percentile, my apologies. For all non-unionized new employees. And I'm amenable to the change, but. Uh, and if I may speak to it. What I'm trying to to get to is I think there's a few elements to decide. I absolutely agree that new hires. Should be at the sixtieth percentile. That's my target. That's what I'd like. I I think we can have a further discussion if we want to, what we do with the current employees and what that looks like. But combining the two might muddy this conversation. So I'd like to get one out of the way. What percentile do we want uh within our? Our brackets to target for new employees. And for me, it's uh sixtyth percentile. Uh, for non-unionized staff, uh, and I look forward to other amendments in order to deliberate what we'd like to have. But for me, that's that's my party. And that's all. Thank you.
All right, we have a directive on the floor. Any thoughts?
Through the chair. So the the wording is that it's the sixtieth percentile for all non-unionized new hires. My only concern here in a a echo in what I said before. But if we do that for our. Non-unionized new hires, it's a very, that's the. A small subsection. And with the exception of it, I believe me and the directors. I don't know why a new hire would not go to the union. You know, if I could make. You know, it's, I think it'd be about. Uh, sixty cents more an hour. In this situation, I believe. If uh. I so I could be non-union or I could just roll directly to the union. I could. And I can make sixty cents more an hour. Um, so there's that risk that's going to be involved that we will be driving our non-unionized staff to a union. For that exact reason that they will be paid. Paid more.
Counselor Taylor, then Counselor Stashik.
I I like the sixtieth percentile. Under no circumstances would I vote for the seventy fifth percentile. I think we've been kind of forced into that. My preference to come up with a solution to the sixtieth percentile. Would be before we make a decision to ask if we're going to come up with a lower percentile to ask administration to go away and come up with a. A long term implementation plan. Um, to try to to try to uh tell us what they would do over. Say, a long period of time to to come up with that. And then they they can come up with the ideas on how to do that, that minimizes the risk over a long period period of time. They're in a better shape. They're in a better position to do that than than I am. Thanks.
Counselor Stashik, Mr. Chair, every question to administration and potentially follow up. Uh, my question to administration is specifically to H R. Uh, I think H R could speak to our ability to be able to attract quality candidates if we're looking at a sixtieth percentile compared to. The rest of the province, including. All municipal competitors.
Um, thank you for the question because that's a that's a good one. Right now, across the board, I am sure it's sort of quitting and the great resignation recruitment's difficult. And I know that there are a few municipalities who are currently compensating at the fifty eighth and sixteenth percentile for. Maybe in a better. Quote unquote location as a more central and they're they're looking at their policies to increase the percentile because they're not able to attract. There are, we're we're doing really. We're doing decently well right now. And if we had a lower wage or if someone came on board and saw that they were making less than someone who's doing the same work, it would stay. Because there's just that many opportunities out there right now. So I think it would really negatively impact our ability to attract. People are challenged right now to attract.
If I could follow up. Okay, I appreciate that comment. Uh, I know even in my industry. We have to pay a premium to get people to come here because it isn't central. It isn't located close to a major center. Again, we have the mountains and it's a great place to live and I love Hinden just as much as anybody. But the reality is you have to pay people more to get them to come to Hinden. My concern is that this council has a pretty ambitious strategic plan. Uh, Hampton is and all the councils that I've been with, we are trying to push for growth. We're trying to push ambitious things. And I feel that to be able to accomplish those things, we need good people. And if we're going to get good people, we have to be willing to pay them. And if we're not going to, we're not going to be able to achieve the goals that we've set. So. I I won't support sixtieth percentile. I think that's too low to be able to contract. Sorry, attract quality candidates. Thank you.
Counselor Ross.
Yeah, for all those same reasons, I I wouldn't support the sixtieth. Uh, we hear a lot about not only. Recruitment but retainment as well. And my issue will be is we will get potentially people here, but they won't stay. They're they'll be looking, they'll be get the get the uh. Experience, but you know, having a person in a position for a year or two and then go on to a larger percentile. Increase in pay. That's how I see it. And hint in in many industries, we see that very often. Uh, this is an opportunity to get that job, take a bit of a, you know, pay. Lower pay, but get that experience to move on. That stepping stone. I don't want to be that stepping stone anymore. Uh, I want, you know, our community to to retain, have those people moving in here, spending their time here. Retiring here, whatever it may be, you know, so. Um, and I think it, you know, we've just had a conversation with the the ability to recruit our C and P and the fact that. You know, we have a service that people. Are attracted to. And that's important, uh, you know, and we're in that area. So it's it's attractive to them. So for those reasons, I can't support the sixtieth. It's too low. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor.
Isn't the sixtieth percentile one of the highest paid premiums around? Like you've compared it to communities you gave. Most people are at the fiftieth. There's only one other community, ten communities. It was at the sixtieth. There's virtually nobody at the seventy fifth.
Or comparable municipalities, but I did get some percentiles from, and I believe it's in the O B C. For cola and we had some in in Canada or in Alberta who are at the eightieth and ninetieth percentiles. Um, and again, those who are compensating at the fifteenth and sixtieth are having more recruitment issues than than we are. Um, and to your point, um, thirty seven percent of the employees who leave us leave us within the first year. So that that cost is is quite high because you don't get it going, right?
Uh, through the chair, just along that line of thought, I I will just point out that we're not only competing against certain comparable municipalities. Good employees is we want to keep it. Good employees have the ability to go and make. More money than they would have to tell me. You know, I think the town in Hilton compensates fairly. But just given the size of our municipality, we do not have the ability to pay the wages that some of these larger municipalities do. So good employees who are mobile. Um, those are the ones you are trying to keep. And those are the ones who are first to go to uh. Uh, to go to the the larger salaries in bigger municipalities. So I do think we're well positioned here for the size of community we have. Um, I don't think we're. We're out of whack, but we are competing with others. Uh, beyond our comparable municipalities.
Counselor Ross. And I think it's just important to that. We do have, uh, as Counselor Stashik said, that strategic plan, and I don't want to get in the. Way of ourselves doing this. If we want our community to 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 flourish and grow. This is a decision that could get in in way of impact that. Yes, we okayed a position, you know, that's strategic director, but that's just one position. If we start to lose others, then. Is that strategic director position going to benefit us like we were hoping it will? In the in the discussion of the budget. So I just don't want to get in the way of ourselves. Uh, so. For that, again, that reason, I I think I hope everybody considers that. As well, thinking of this. Thank you.
Counselor. Counselor Rice.
Thank you, sir. You know what? We have people within this organization that I would hate to lose. Uh, I I would love to name names, but I'm not going to. They are so good. And I I think all of us right now feel that we are moving in such a positive direction. So I'm saying that, you know what? I came into this meeting saying no way to that seventy fifth. But now I have to say no way in sixtyninth. So I cannot support this.
Counsel. We have a d- direction on the floor. Uh, and I will call it the question then that committee amend section two point two of the proposed pay principal policy. H R nineteen oh two to read the town targets. Pay at the sixtieth percentile for all non-union new employees. All in favor? All opposed? That is, uh. Sorry, in favor, opposed? I was in favor, opposed? It's defeated. All right. So how do you want to deal with this?
So I guess my question to to the council is what's the number? And if it is seventy five, it's seventy five. If it's another number. And to Counselor Taylor's comment, and and I'm not against this, I wanted to separate it. But if there's an appetite to do it collectively where it's, uh, we pick it, we pick in an amount. Uh, and it's, uh, it affects the current employees too, then let's go down that path. Um, but to me, uh, if it's not sixty, I'd like a number older than seventy five is my appetite. Uh, I just don't know what that number is. Thanks.
Well, I I I I guess I'll put it out there to my fellow counselors and and um we can set a, we can set a hard target, but. Be it what it will, it's arbitrary. I mean, whether it's sixty or seventy five. Um, it is, it, does it make sense to talk? And this is how we've been operating to this point is to talk about a competitive wage. Um, we've had to do what we've had to do to bring people in here. But I'll tell you, as soon as you target seventy five and that's the number in there. Everybody is making fifty five, they're making sixty, they're going to go, I want to make seventy now. Because it's policy. So we need to come up with another two hundred fifty thousand dollars to 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 get everybody to seventy five right now. And we've been operating with this soft policy that nobody's really sure where it's coming from. Uh, for the last ten years and, you know, does it make sense to talk about a competitive wage without? Um, having a hard and fast number in there.
Counselor Stashik. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Speaking for the seventy fifth percentile, personally, I'm okay with that. Wouldn't, I wouldn't support it if it was higher. But I am okay with seventy five. And the reason for that. The organization's been operating on an informalized seventy fifth percentile wage recruitment structure for a long time now. And we have been told repeatedly that even at that, there are still. Challenges in recruiting quality personnel to the organization. And in fact, we still. Several vacant positions that have been vacant for quite a long time, even though that informalized structure. Has been followed. In terms of. Of. The impact that formalizing a seventy fifth percentile might have on the. Existing staff and and their expectations. I think this. Presentation that's been given to us. Lays out a really good strategy put forward from administration on how to deal with that and how to address it moving forward. I don't have any particular concerns that there's going to be a big immediate upcoming impact if this is something that's supported by council. Um, I'd like to see it forward at seventy five. But that's just my thoughts and feelings. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Michael. Um, I guess my question to administration, I wasn't able to really.
Um I guess my question to administration, I wasn't able to really flesh out. If we do nothing and we continue on, how are the uh, how are the uh, what are the parameters in place that directs administration to select the amount of money we're offering to jobs like? That's where I still kind of struggle. So you have a vacancy person was making, let's say, uh you know, higher seventy fifth. Where do they drop out like? Do you have the latitude to change like to change that number, to pick that number, or do these things come to counsel to decide um on on where we, where we, what we pay them?
Um so through the chair to members of council, so every community does it different. Um I I operated um in a municipality that did not have this type of policy. Um but that was up to me to determine what was fair and equitable. Um I reported to council on our salary range, I believe, every couple of years. Um but when we were looking at filling the position, we would look at the comparable municipalities, we would place them based on what we saw, and then we would make a decision of well, where they sit on the scale based on how hard that position is to recruit. Um you know, the experience that that person brings to the table and the negotiation. But there's that accountability of simply bringing it forward to to council. I that can work my my preference, especially here at the town in Hilton, understanding that there are issues here that I did not experience in a non-unionized environment. It's much, much simpler to um in a non-unionized.
What's the way of the union?
Um it 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 just is two different aspects, right? And they're both important, but it's important that you treat everyone equitably, but they negotiate different things. So my 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 stance is that you have to treat the entire organization the same. Um and you know, union and non-union are just as valuable to the to the organization. So um because we found some inequities and and you know what? Not as many inequities as I I feared. Um we are closer to union than I than I imagined, but there are um, there are a few outliers that I think we can bring it to. Um bring into that percentile and bring into that percentile with I relatively little cost, we'd be looking at well, twenty six thousand dollars this year, nineteen, X and eleven. Um after that, come um twenty twenty six, when we have to have a discussion with the union, we can discuss options at that point on how we bring everybody closer to that, within that seventy five percentile range. At that time, but um so that's my uh my long-winded way of saying that's how we did it prior to uh uh this policy. Thank you.
Um a follow-up to that, then I guess on page thirty six of ninety eight, on the bottom table where you sort of lay out seventy fifth percentile. So it looks like, it looks like there are some positions five percent below that in on the union side, but there's there's four positions making a hundred and five thousand dollars more than the seventy fifth percentile. But as we've already talked, there is no way to sort of claw that. So we just continue to pay that premium. Same with the seventy as compared to the fifty. So so there would, there would be, and I said two fifty. It's like it's a hundred and sixty five thousand we would have to come up with. Um this year, next year. Should we budget for it now for twenty three? Like if if this gets to be a hard number, we can't get any of the red back, but we gotta pay out the black. Um you know, what is the timing on the requirement for that money?
Uh so through the chair to the rest of council, so just um just for clarity, on the non-unionized side on that fifty thousand, we were not um recommending that we tackle that right away or um and regardless if it's the seventieth, but the ones that are above that are non-union, uh based on that market compensation. Report that we got, they've identified that there's reasons why these positions are paid over the those percentiles and over the seventy fifth percentile, and that usually had to do with internal compression issues. We have a, we have dealt with a few, uh just with some of the changeover. There was a uh one particular individual when they left, we did bring it back down to the uh 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 we did lower that salary. So um we we don't recommend that we tackle the non-unionized side on pulling any wages back until we can also address the the unionized side because otherwise we can compound those compression issues. Um the ones that are below those target thresholds, those can come up a little faster, but we would be looking at all of the three-year um transition to get those individuals back up to um the percentile range that we targeted.
Okay. Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, I don't support the seventy fifth percentile. It's not what surrounding towns pays uh. But we're paying a healthy pay premium for surrounding towns. It's just not fair to the taxpayers. This is my position.
Counselor Oz.
Yeah. I I don't compare to others. Every town is unique. Every town has their differences of strategic plans, their direction, their goals. And I personally, I I'm good with the seventy five the way it is. Um we've heard many, many times and and we've seen, I've seen the difficulty in recruiting and retaining and hearing that number of thirty seven percent of people leave after a year uh is is disturbing. And I think that any decrease in percentiles, you know, we're already experiencing that. They're going off to find other jobs that either are higher paying or whatever. And we're seeing that high percentage rate. I don't wanna see that percentage rate to go up. Um you know, and and we do, we want qualified, quality people. And I also recognize that if you look at other communities right now too, they are having a very difficult time recruiting at what level they are at. So we're having a hard time at the seventy five percentile. We have other communities that are losing their staff, going off to others and now having a hard time uh filling it. Our neighboring community Edson is is feeling that right now. So I'm, I I don't, I I have uh you know, I I would like to see stay the way it's, so thank you.
Counselor Stash.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh yeah, just to add a little bit to what Counselor Oz was saying. There is the bullet point in the report regarding how much turnover costs the organization. Some from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty two. Uh costs covering vacancy, lost productivity, recruitment, training costs total nine hundred and thirty seven thousand three hundred and eighty three dollars, so nearly a million dollars in in extra costs due to turnover from people leaving the organization. Counselor Oz said they come, they stay for a few months, they find something better and move on. For me, I compared to private industry. Why do businesses in private industry choose to pay their more, their employees more than their competitor down the road? And so they have an easier time of attracting people and attracting good people so that they have a competitive advantage. That's what I wanna see in our organization. I want our organization to have a competitive advantage. I want our our staff to be able to do the things that they, that we're asking of them to achieve our strategic goals that we've set out. And honestly, I just, I can't see a way to do that without the ability to attract and retain real good quality people. Thanks.
Hey, Counselor Race, does this involve putting a ration forward?
No, sir, and I'm gonna check back.
Okay. Um I guess I'll make a comment and then we have had some significant turnover and I think the elephant room that we haven't had a conversation was not just been based on salary. I mean, there's, there's been some real issues that as an organization, we've worked our way through. We have a new C A O in place now and hopefully brings some some stability to the organization. So I just, I I I have to uh caution that hopefully the last, I don't know, pick the number, but the last number of years isn't a hard wringer for what's coming forward. Um and with that, um how would my, cause I can't make a motion, how would my fellow counselors like to deal with this report? Counselor, or sorry, I keep calling you Counselor, C A O, and ask
through the chair, um understanding that the, you know, there's we were split on the last vote, you know, uh as administration, I don't or we don't need a specific direction here today, as long as we council understands the policy that's being brought forward, uh councils fully informed. Um if there's any other input to shape the policy going forward, we can make that recommendation. Otherwise, we can bring this forward to um simply a motion to refer to council, we can bring this forward and have a uh a debate at that time. But my my goal here today is to ensure that all of councils well informed of of the issue.
Counselor Oz. So based on that, I appreciate that. Uh see, I'm gonna move the administration, sorry. Not the administration recommends, councils or committee recommend. Let me make sure I get this correctly. The committee refers administration to bring the draft pay principles policy H R nineteen oh two as presented in the regular meeting of councils for December twentieth, twenty twenty two. I can speak to it. Sure. But you know, I I think that that is the time to, you know, we understand where administration is coming from, we've had the discussion. You know, it it will then come to regular for debate, uh and then at that time we can make decisions on, you know, percentiles moving forward at that time, um you know, and I'm comfortable with that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I think that I'll I'll vote against this. I think part of our duty, unless unless it's uh the uh the entire council believes there's no major changes needed, then I understand moving it to regular, but I think there is major things uh. Uh I I I'd like to see some conversation at committee regarding the cola uh equation and do we want a cola equation or do we wanna spend two hours in the other room debating and tweaking and doing uh potentially five, seven uh motions uh or amendments to the bylaw? That's usually not to me the 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 best place to do five, seven amendments. I'd rather do it here, uh if there's an appetite to tackle a few things. So for that reason, I I'd like to 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 have a conversation regarding the cola. Uh which policy do we move forward? Are we just taking the full draft policy that uh uh Miss Hope put together? Uh and I'd still like to to maybe get some consensus on the number. Is it two thirds? Is it seventy? Is it seventy five? Uh uh and to me, uh uh those are are, it's more conducive uh to have that conversation in this room. So for that reason, I till I hear from more members of council, I'll vote against it and in hopes that we can make some progress today. Thank you.
Counselor Race.
Uh thank you, sir. I will support this. And you know what? January tenth, that gives us sufficient time to ask a question of administration.
December twentieth.
Oh, oh, I thought it was number three. Oh, okay. Well, sorry about that. You know, because it is December twentieth and not January tenth. I cannot support this. And I was, I was hoping this would come back to the standing committee meeting where we would have ample opportunity to to uh talk to administration, ask those questions, get the color information. And I really, really need to see a full complement of council at that meeting when we make this decision. I don't wanna see another title. That is to be, so I take it back. I'm sorry, sir. I cannot support this.
Counselor Stash.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. I I do agree. I think it's pretty true to move this to regular. I think if council has an appetite to discuss any changes that they wanna see to the draft document, I have no problem with that. In fact, I think welcome that. That's the opportunity that's where you're for, so many of the rules for.
Counselor Oz.
Okay, so we don't have a vote. I will draw. I mean, if if that's the case, we'll, we can continue this conversation. I'll withdraw the direction if that's what council. If there's no.
So what are the rules here? Do we vote on the request to withdraw? Is that how it works? I'm only halfway through my Robert's Rules of Order, so.
Uh through the chair, that's halfway further than I go up, but uh if you would like to rescind it, he can uh as the ruler.
Thank you. Counselor Race.
Thank you, deputy. I am seeking consensus that committee refers administration can bring back the draft pay principal policy H R nineteen zero two to the January tenth, twenty twenty three committee of the whole meeting.
Should I speak to it?
I think I have, sir.
Thank you. Counsel, we, Counselor Oz.
Uh and with others, I think that I won't support it next from the conversation that's already had. We're here, we'll talk about it and see what we can move forward and and if we can make some adjustments, maybe then I might look at this, but I I don't wanna kick it down the road to to January tenth and then we don't do anything and then we go back to another committee meeting. So that's the only reason, uh you know, um.
You'd like to respond?
I would, sir. You know what? I think January tenth, that gives us ample opportunity to ask our questions of administration to get as much information as we can. And another thing is to in, hopefully try to ensure that we have a full complement, but seven counselors are sitting at the table when we have that discussion at committee to make a decision to take it to regular. So we have all the answers we need and when we get to regular, we'll.
And I guess I'll be speaking in favor of this. I don't know that seven, ten to seven is the time to kick off the discussion for a significant item. We we have um business left to do it tonight and not to avoid it, but I think that this is uh this is a really significant uh decision that needs to be made. I don't know. I I think the the number in there is a dollar fifty three per hour. We work two hundred nine thousand hours a year. It's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. It's a, you know, it's a three percent tax increase. Or the consequence is is that. I mean, it's a, it's a significant decision to be made and I think that it it warrants the time and 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 not just financially, but um from the perspective of of supporting um uh management and the organization. Counsel, anyone else? All right, can we get it up, please, Jen? We have a direction on the floor that committee refers administration to bring back the draft pay principles policy H R nineteen oh two to the January tenth, twenty twenty three committee of the whole meeting. All in favor? Opposed if any. Thank you. All right, uh so on to uh reports from administration, five point two, the R C N municipal enforcement services in order.
Uh thank you, Chair. I refer this one to our Director of Protective Services. Thank you, C A O. We had earlier a very last discussion about the R C P and the options available to us uh for uh reducing numbers, raising numbers, uh having unfunded numbers uh and uh I I'm not sure that I could add anymore to that discussion other than to answer maybe some, maybe some operating home questions that are the impact of our areas of our operation.
Counsel. Counselor Taylor.
Uh to get the discussion going, I would like to seek consensus to keep the R C M P staff compliment at nineteen uh and reduce the funded positions to sixteen officers and bring this decision back to regular council.
Staff positions stay at nineteen and reduce the
funded positions to sixteen officers.
Eight?
Yes. And to bring this decision back to a regular council meeting. And to bring this decision back to a regular council meeting. Um, you make that a little bigger. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, you were waiting for me, um. Um, seek consensus, that council seek consensus. That council seek consensus.
Like your.
Maybe.
That, yeah.
Committee, committee, okay, committee, me.
They're voting on it, you know. Senseless.
But we see consensus here. That the, the committee see consensus. Uh, to keep the R C M P, uh, staff compliment. The R C P staff compliment. Our positions, uh, get the word of the ready, we're, we're stay at nineteen. And reduce the funded positions to, uh, sixteen officers. And comma, and bring a report back to a regular council meeting. Yeah, I think that reflects. What, what I'd like to start the discussion off at.
Yeah, well, we're just going into capitalism, and so, uh, Mayor Michaels. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, before I share my comments, I'd ask for a friendly amendment, just keep the wording similar to what. Uh, the R C P were using, that. It would be, and reduce. The hint and working F T E target to sixteen offers officers. Um. The reason is. Contractually, this, this is saying. We're only gonna fund sixteen, I don't think contractually you can do that. Because it's a target, uh, it might be fifteen point seven, it might be sixteen.
No, that's, I, I accept that, can you provide the wording, please?
Yeah, agenda working, uh, reduce, uh, the, uh, re- reduce the hint and working F T E. Hint and working F T E targets. To sixteen officers. To sixteen, uh, to sixteen, actually, officers doesn't have to be in there. Right, the hint and working F T E party to sixteen. Counselor Taylor, the minimal to that.
Yeah, it's fun.
And, and that's all. Counselor Saget. Mr. Chair, so I guess this question would be for counsel, Taylor, so with that option, or with that, uh. Uh, propose consensus request. Be in alignment with option three from the, the report that we received earlier, what page is that, I don't know, that would be in page. Twenty-two, we run a package in twenty or thirty of the report. Or at the bottom.
Yes, I believe it would reflect that.
So that would, that would be the loss of two. Uh, general duty constables and one. I, I guess that's a decision that they made, but that would be the gist of that, right? Three, three reduced positions. Wouldn't, wouldn't it? Correct? This.
Right, and that would, that would, that would, that would also reflect the fact that we have a standing, uh, basically one person, uh. Hard and soft vacancy from nineteen to eighteen.
I, I think it actually is option one. Because in the table fourteen on page nineteen of thirty of the report. It shows that it's bringing the net F T Es from seventeen to sixteen.
I can respond. Right now, we have a contract that. The R C M P could. Implement nineteen F T Es. If they were fully complemented. But Counselor Taylor's suggestion is to reduce that to sixteen. So by my understanding, that would be in the line, I, I'm not, sorry, maybe I'm not understanding what you're saying. Option three. It says, I think it's municipal business line from nineteen to sixteen. Which is what Counselor Taylor's proposes. That's the first bullet point to the bottom of page twenty and thirty of your option three.
I. I think what I'm trying to get at is actually option one to make. To make a, um, savings for next year of one R C M P officer. And a longer term savings, they said we were targeting eighteen of two savings. In the year in the future, so that's, that's what I'm trying to get at with that. So it's, it's, it reflects option. One, they said that we were targeting for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. Seventeen working positions. This gets us at, uh, at sixteen, and they said in two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, they were getting. Uh, eighteen working positions. This gets us in the longer term at, uh. Two below that, that's the terminology I was using and comparing it to.
Mr. Chair, if I can, I'm actually gonna withdraw my question, because that actually doesn't align with any of the options. The options are to reduce from nineteen down to whatever. Cause right now contracts for nineteen, so. It, I, I'm gonna withdraw my question, it doesn't align, it's. Thank you.
Counselor Oz.
Yeah. I, I just, I can't support this, um. Cutting service levels at. In this department, this particular way is not the way to save money. Um, I look at so many different things and other government levels, the first thing that people go to is the most expensive, but most vital things to our community. Uh, typically it's health, typically it's education and other areas such as that, and I am not. At all. Able to make a decision to reduce our C M P services in our community, um, you know, uh, I had a conversation with some of our R C P members, and our. Our community still deals a great deal with, uh, trafficking of drugs, uh, there is crime rates of, uh, theft. Is, is, it's, it's, they're managing it. But it's still there, it's, it's. Uh, a reality in our community and reducing services, I have no desire to do that, and I would never want to go to the, my, the people I speak to and say. Hey, we're gonna cut services here, when we haven't even talked about cutting services in other areas in our organization. R C M P, you know, that, this is something that people rely on, um, we heard too that. You know, we start cutting again, and, and the, there is lots of reasons why people are attracted to Hinton, they bring their families here. A lot of organi, a lot of places don't, they don't bring their families, they don't, they aren't interested in going other communities because of. The, the services that are provided, so, I, I. I, I strongly disagree with this and will not be supporting it, thank you. CEO Panasic.
Uh, through the chair to members of council, so just a few things, um. The first, it's not administration's. Preference to seek consensus on options at this point in time, I think that, um. I think this may be straying a little bit too far away from the intention of a committee of the whole, and the committee of the whole is to, um, help shape policy, help to understand. Uh, but not to make a decision, if it's option one, two, three, to actually decide what. The, the, the other thing on this, this one is, the. R C M P did not actually identify. The options that they spoke to in the delegation when it comes to, um, the possibility of setting targets versus reducing that, uh. That sets, uh, staffing level from nineteen, so I, I. My preference would be to, um. Simply to say. Uh, to refer this to a regular council meeting, um, with the information related to. Setting targets versus producing the, uh, actually set R C M P members, cause I think we have a little bit of work to do. I'm not entirely sure how this would work, and I think we just want it to be, uh, bring all the information forward right here.
So, as a follow-up to that, though, how does this differ from the discussion we just had as it relates to, uh, to the, to the, to the. Pay policy? And how do we have that holistic discussion about, uh, about, um, um, all of the issues relates this? Uh, so consideration.
So, so good, uh. It's a good example, because one of the consensus was, you know, uh. To make amendments to the policy or to help shape the policy prior to going forward, um, but I don't, I wouldn't, um, similarly, I wouldn't support a. I wouldn't support him. Support a motion to say that the committee seek consensus to, um. Pass this policy or to not pass this policy, because that's a decision, not shaping the policy, and I think the two. Um, we want to keep separate as much as possible in a community of the whole forum. So, you know, I'm okay with shaping, uh, just administratively, but I, I just think we need to be cautious on the line of making decisions, because we do have a, an obligation to go forward to. The council meeting, um, with an open mind capable of persuasion, I think if we're. This, to me, falls too far into a decision, um. Versus shaping of policy and input.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm happy to withdraw. But, uh, what information would you bring, uh, with respect to targets that we haven't heard?
Through, uh, through the chairs, members of council. I think we would have to establish exactly how that would look, and I, I'm not entirely clear on whether. That's going to be. Frozen position, un frozen position, they talked a lot of, uh, the nuances of that relationship, uh, for me personally, and. I'm not sure if Matt agrees with me, but I think we need to nail down exactly how that would work, and how often are we setting the targets, and there's a lot of other aspects, I think, to this, I think it's a really good option that they identified. Um. But I just, those, those nuances that go along with this policy, I think we would have a little bit of work to do on, on the process, on how that would actually be carried out.
I'll withdraw it, perhaps, I was premature.
And I know now that if you've made that motion, you can withdraw, so away you go. Uh, did you care to make your comment before we move on, Mayor Michaels, all right? Okay, so, how are we dealing?
Uh, thanks, Chair, I'd like to put forward, uh, what CEO Panasic. Uh, suggests, actually, before I do that, um, I, I liked, the only thing I'd like. To maybe consider is, do, do we get that report and we come back to this room? And have that discussion and then say, give direction out of. At that meeting to then go there, this is a huge topic. Um. So I would. I see some head nodding with that, I'd like to put forward CEO Panasic's suggestion to bring it to a committee of the whole meeting. Uh, with the report, et cetera, the language that he'll repeat so eloquently. Pretty done.
So. So Jen, just a, uh, a motion to refer this to a future committee of the whole meeting with a.
Great motion, Mayor Michaels.
I believe the intention was to include, um, a report on. The freezing or the, uh, target setting, uh, options. As identified by the R C.
Sorry.
With a report for, um, freezing or target setting options as identified. By the R C.
If I speak to that, Mr.
Please, uh, it should be with a report.
But, um, I think I support this, I. You have to, you made. Technically allowed to go against it. Uh. The only thing is, I, I just wonder if it's a bit too prescriptive with the word freezing, my, my bigger goal now. Is to get information on the working F T E budgetary impacts, right, they worked at sixteen point eight. Last, uh, uh, this year, and they're targeting eighteen, uh, I'm convinced I want to go down that path, I don't want to even look at the freezing part now, for me, it's budgetary. I want to report on, what does sixteen look like, sixteen point five, maybe seventeen, eighteen that they're proposing, and what the service level changes between. Budgeting at that, at those amounts, and then we decide, um, do, do we want to go so. I'm open to any friendly amendments with that, that I don't overly love the word freezing, but that was my target of, I'm looking at budgetary impacts of F, of working F T Es only now. And I'm, and I'm happy landing on that number at a future meeting with, with the information provided by administration, thanks.
We're gonna change, you'd like to see it there?
Uh, I'll wait to listen from council, and then I can. Propose after council.
Counselor Taylor.
Yeah, that's where I was, I wasn't on freezing, I was on the targeted setting options and looking at this, looking at a number that. Sixteen or there, or thereabouts. To save, uh, money and giving them the flexibility. To move around that, uh.
Suggested wording changes?
Well, it would be just to take out the, uh, word freezing.
And I would be okay with that, uh, Mr. Chair.
So that's where most of our discussion was about.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor.
And the word or. Hey, Counsel, we have a direction on the floor. Counselor Race.
I'm sure, should we set a bit of a date, like first quarter, second quarter for this information? This is starting committee?
Yes.
Uh, through the chair, yeah, that would, that would be helpful, just looking at what our next committee of the whole meeting is.
January seventeenth, tenth. But it's pretty cool.
Uh, through the chair, I believe we, ready by the ten, um, with. Our executive assistants telling us to meetings, but I'm sure we can manage that even through the, uh. Uh, agenda, uh, preparation, possibly moving things around.
I know on the tenth, we have C P. I mean, to us all, and I don't know if it's critical, uh. Rush this information right now to us, so.
Uh, we suggest, uh, if, if I'm allowed to amend it, uh, that we use language to bring it, uh, no later than the, this, uh, January twenty-fourth, meaning the whole meeting, and then that gives the administration the flexibility. So if I'm able to. I believe I'm able to change. That. Uh, back by, uh. Uh, the committee refer this item. Back. No later than the January twenty-fourth, uh, twenty-fourth, no later. And, and if there's, uh, an ability to bring it on a tenth, great. Thank you.
All right, we have. Another revised direction on the floor of council. Comments, thoughts? Counselor Taylor?
Uh, to administration. This would include a must other things, um. How this would work. And who gets to change the target? That sort of thing.
Uh, through the chair, yes, it would, as well as any contractual obligations that council.
All right. Seeing no one in queue, uh.
Chair, before you call a question, this. So, sorry, just. Would there be anything else in the report, or is it just going to focus on target setting options? I guess that's to administration, I'm not sure who that's to.
Uh, through the chair to council, so. The, the report that you've been receiving from the R C M P will be included as well, because there are quite a few options that have been identified in there, like. And good information, um, but we also want to just identify. Those other options that were not specifically identified there with the target setting option. Those other options that were not specifically identified there with the target setting option. Uh and any implications that may come along with those options. All of them will come forward again for just adding a little bit of a. We're we're adding a report to to discuss that particular um option.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Yeah, just a quick question, I guess we're first. Will administration be also inviting? Say staff sergeants uh who are. Uh that conversation, just to, we have any questions on service level? Uh they would be better to to answer those questions potentially than say administration would be, or is that? Not. Not the intent back.
Uh through the chair to all council, uh yes, I would extend that invitation to um. Staff Sergeant Frigomani as well as any of the other uh people that we're sitting here could could be made available.
Sir Taylor. Miss, sorry, I just want to be clear, this would include like the uh. Like the um the funding implications to our budget of of some of the options too.
Last call for alcohol, folks. Alright, so I call the question, then the committee refers this item back no later than January twenty fourth, twenty twenty three. To the committee of the whole meeting for further review and discussion. With a report for target setting options as identified by the R C M P. All in favor? What was the Fanny? Love that one, thank you. Counselor Taylor?
Could I ask administration a question? At that time, when it comes back to this committee. Could we make some sort of decision? Are we just gonna talk about it and then bring it over there with no decision? Because traditionally, we make kind of a consensus rough decision in here and then. Maybe there's other information that comes and the final decision is kind of really there and. Everybody recognizes that your mind could change. I guess that's up to us, okay? No, no question.
There's no such thing. Alright, that brings us to item five point three. Oh, Councilor.
Um I I believe administration was looking for on the matter of R C M P of municipal enforcement services. Not sure. Does the the current, the other, the the last just direction was on R C M P. This is a joint between R C M P and municipal enforcement, so they're looking. Uh for recommending to accept it for information, so. I don't know is. I'm prepared to do that, but I didn't know council wants to specifically speak to this report. Mister Chair.
Good point. Administration?
Um well, through the chair, uh we can certainly, when we bring back financial reported, if. The committee is comfortable with that, we can also include. Our portion of the uh the enforcement, so if this was really a. Or information or. The committee to consider alongside with the R C M P because we do complement the R C M P in a number of different ways. And there are. Essentially other options out there, like you're. Deciding on making. Changes to your enforcement's uh services, uh because we do provide some of those. So we wanted to include that for information to help. Uh provide a more wholesome discussion for the council.
Thank you, Counselor Stash. Uh Mister Chair, and thank you, Councilor Ross, for bringing that up, that's. I didn't iterate it very well, but that's kind of what I was getting at when I was asking if there was going to be anything additional in the report that comes back when the when the uh. R C M P decision comes back. Because they are, they are linked. So does administration need? They need a direction to bring this back to the January tenth meeting as well?
Uh so so through the chair. We certainly can, but I don't believe that we need to because we do have a motion on the floor um. Currently to do a review of the service, I believe, correct, Mike? So so as a part of that motion. If I remember it correctly, it was to do a review of all enforcement services, including uh municipal peace officers. Automated traffic enforcement, so um that's, I think, what we're still discussing, so that's what we can continue to put forward, all that information for council.
Thank you, Mister Chair, Counselor Ross.
Yeah, so along those same lines then, because. Let's say hypothetically, okay, that. We say we want to reduce the target R C M P. But the appetite is, okay, so we reduce the target R C M P, which, but do we want to compensate that with, say? Another C P O potentially, is that is administration prepared to have, would be prepared that evening to entertain that conversation?
Uh through the chair to all council, yes, we would be prepared for that and also any uh changes to. Uh previous decisions uh with regards to automatic traffic enforcement, everything is on the table.
Thank you.
For clarity, I think we're talking about two things here. We're talking about bringing this report. To make a decision on the R C M P back and then it was brought up that, and I think in the course of the budget discussion. We talked about there being a more holistic. Report coming back as it relates to all protective services, so that report. All protective services would come on the twenty fourth of January?
So through the chair, uh yes, so all of the information about um our enforcement services will complement that report. Um but including the specific uh uh options of reducing services through the R C M P that we. But just understanding that it's a wholesome discussion, there are possibly some potential. Uh options out there, we'll include all that information.
Thank you. Okay, before we move on. Alright, let's move on. Okay, we're on item five point three, the revised bylaw eleven twenty four, code of conduct. Council Code of Conduct.
Through the chair, I will refer this to uh Ms. Mark, who's done quite a bit of work on this time.
Good evening, committee. The council code of conduct working committee has finalized its review of bylaw eleven twenty four. And this evening is presenting revised bylaw eleven twenty four for debate and discussion under the whole. Uh dependent upon the vigor of such conversation, administration is currently recommending that the revised bylaw be brought forward to council on December twentieth. Uh the last session of the calendar year for first reading. And all members of working committee are present to speak to any of the changes made.
Counselor Taylor?
Yeah, um just to uh those that weren't part of this, um there was a significant change in my mind in the uh. Complaint uh process. And that uh change was to get uh. An investigator involved, so you should be aware of that, so. You you do the informal process and then if you uh want to carry it to the formal process. It automatically goes to an investor, a third party investigator. And I think the committee thought that that was reasonable, it's not going to add on that much of a cost, because we're hopefully not going to have more than. One of these every uh. Uh ten years, so I don't think it's going to be a big a big cost and then. Get a good investigator, they're going to be able to sort out the frivolous from the uh serious complaints, so that to me was one of the significant things that we did. Other ones, but I'll leave you with my bosom yourself.
It was stimulating reading last night after the. Council. Alright, okay, Seal.
Sorry, through the chair, just in regards to the um. That formal uh complaint procedure, uh one recommendation that I may have on eighteen point one point five. Is does including soliciting information from the complainant, but it doesn't discuss uh. Soliciting information from the uh member of council, I think just out of procedural fairness to that. The council member that the investigator would seek information for both, I would just recommend saying including, but not limited to. To allow the uh. The investigator some some leeway in uh determining how best to investigate that.
Thoughts? Counselor Taylor?
May be so bold as to. Suggest that we. Direct the administration to deliver the amended and revised bylaw number one, one, two, four. To the December twentieth, uh two thousand twenty two regular council meeting.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair, uh there's just been no amendments yet, so I think.
Okay, I can make that up.
Through the chair, if I may, make one more possible suggestion um. According to this bylaw, all of these matters are dealt with in closed session, uh which I think is the appropriate place for just about all of them. Um but I'll just share some experiences that have been going around the municipal world and uh. Weaponization of closed session items, especially for. Um counselors who don't necessarily abide by the same rules as the rest of council or. And I think that this um. This bylaw should be able to address that appropriately, so some of the things that are happening is. Uh councils are trying to deal with council. Conduct behind closed doors um. But the the individual counselor doesn't necessarily abide by the closed session rules that he's going out into the community, he's saying one thing. Council who are. Or she. Uh uh the uh rest of council who does comply with the rules and does respect the uh the closed session rules. Uh can't say anything, so that it's caused a lot of issues in other municipalities and they're saying, because our bylaw is saying it's all in closed session. We can't tell our side of the stories and we're getting a lot of flack, so there's been some situations where that's. Um some members have weaponized process in that way, so you know, you may want to retain the right to have these. This process in public, if you decide to do that, I think. That would be a decision of of council, but uh one recommendation that I have.
Counselor Stash, and thank you, Mister Chair, so if I could ask CEO Panasic where specifically he's referring to where. Into. It takes that it's in closed session. I'm not questioning it, I just, I don't, I don't see that anywhere that if that it's in closed session.
Uh eighteen point one point six, uh it identifies that. Uh all proceedings of the investigator regarding the investigation must be confidential. And because we're referring all code of conduct complaints to that investigation, uh investigate investigator. Uh that would be confidential.
Uh thank you, thank you, Mister Chair.
If I may, so on eighteen point one point six um. Must be confidential unless otherwise directed by council may appropriate, if that is a change that council wants to consider.
Mister Chair, I'd like to make that motion actually to seek consensus to, I like it, make that change. Motion would be to seek consensus of committee. You know, man, eighteen point one point six.
What did you want to add at the end? Proceeds of the investigative regarding the investigations is confidential.
The last draft of my council.
Thank you.
Speak good. Uh no, I agree with CEO and S. Thank you, Mister Chair, so Taylor.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that, I mean, I would, my position would be that the council is a public uh person, so that it should be public, but uh. I'm just wondering what the F O I P legislation stands on that, I can't think of something more confidential than take a. Counselor and uh and do a uh action like this on it and usually. That's a mandatory non-disclosure and for. You know, uh personal uh disciplinary matters, so wouldn't this be a F O I P protected thing, so we 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 can put the. Council can just throw F O I P above the window, but is that really a legal uh a legal thing that we're doing?
Uh through the chair to the rest of council, so. Um municipalities all over Alberta uh actually deal with this and some actually do it exclusively in. In public, so we absolutely can. Um depending on the nature of the. Um the complaint or the investigation, uh I think we would recommend that. Some do not go in public regardless, uh depending on the specific. Uh specific item, but um when it comes to a counselor and um. We'll say discussing sanctions or having this conversation in public, you absolutely can. Depending on the individual circumstance, you may not want to.
What would that circumstance, for example, be?
Through the chair and members of council, you know, uh an easy one that comes to mind may be a. A situation of, say, sexual harassment, uh when you do have a in form of a victim or something like that, so there are cases where. You do to F O I P, you do not want to do this in public, but I think for the vast majority of uh the code of conduct complaints, it would be fine to do. In uh in public.
Sure, thanks.
Counselor Rice?
Thank you, sir, that was my question, who sets the criteria as what is, what it's not?
And through the chair to members of council, so you know, depending on whether council has a desire to. You know, much like we make all our decisions, I I would believe that you would ask your administration possibly so uh. A legal opinion on whether this could be discussed in uh in the open section, and then you make the decision at that point.
Thank you.
Alright, anyone else? Alright, I call to question then, the committee seek consensus to amend. Eighteen point one point six in the manner outlined up there. All in favor?
Alright, um Counselor Ross, just a quick question on that. First matter, though, that CEO Panasic brought up in regards to the investigator. Um we captured this one in in a consensus, we didn't really capture that in a consensus, so I'm not sure. If it's necessary or if that was captured by administration, and I'm referring to when he was talking about the investigator soliciting. Information not only from the person that's the complainant, but the person, did we, did we get that in wording?
No.
I just want to make sure it's captured, if if Min got it, it's going to come to us on the twentieth, or when that comes, that's fine, I just want to make sure we caught it.
Counselor Stash, yeah, Mister Chair, if that is a change that committee wants to support it, it needs to be supported by a consensus, I would think.
So I don't want to make it, because I don't remember what the wording was, but I look at CEO Panasic, I know that Counselor Taylor, you would make, you said you'd make it, but we didn't really.
Make him a deputy counselor and we'll have him take it, so, but.
Uh I can make it, I think, I think the wording on. Think the wording was uh eighteen one, does she have that? May solicit information but not make, including but not limited to soliciting information from the complainant. Think that's the only change you recommend. Can you know it? Is that right?
Yes.
Before the words solicit.
Including, right after the word including? There's no word. Okay, um eighteen one um. The uh to invent uh that that the following words be added to the uh to the to the uh first sentence, I guess. But do I have to read the whole sense?
Yes, please, that the investigator, sorry, that the investigator may solicit.
Well, if I have to read the whole sentence, I'll start from the beginning, eighteen point one five, upon receipt of a complaint under this bylaw. Under this bylaw. Comma.
But not limited to.
Right.
Information.
I, I think you got it.
Memory needs to be capitalized, though.
I'll take that and put it in here.
Would you like to speak to your motion?
Counselor Taylor? No, I think it's uh, good.
Been spoken to. Anyone else? Uh, okay. Seeing no one in queue, I will call, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
I, I, sorry, it's, it's Counselor Neuer's motion, but I don't think the wording is correct. It doesn't make sense to me.
On receipt of the, the, of this bylaw, investigator must review the complaint and decide whether to proceed to investigate the complaint or not. Including but not limited to soliciting information from the complainant.
My. Oh, yeah, I see what you mean. It's not really a sentence.
If, if I may, like, the original intent was that they would solicit information from the complainant. So the open assic suggestion was to solicit, solicit, solicit information from the complainant and member, and, and member. Uh, it wasn't to expand the investigation, which is kind of what that wording implies.
Can you make a change that fixes it?
My name is Richard. CAO Panasik had good wording when he originally suggested it. I don't recall what it was. I mean, I could, but I'd have to sit here and words.
Through the chair. I already flipped my page over and I lost my, my place, my apologies.
Here, hi.
Um, oh, that's why it's over there. So, so through the chair, I, I think that maybe we could take out including but not limited to if we are going to include and member in question, just because it, it, it just simply identifies both. I think the rest of the motion. Um, Jen, is that outside of that clause or is that all a part of it?
Oh, I get you. I understand what you're talking about.
From the complainant and then after that, and member in question.
I see what you mean now.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so including but not limited to soliciting information from the complainants and the member in question. So through the chair, I'm, I'm comfortable with, uh,
Well, including.
Yes, uh, I, I, I think, but not limited to needs to be removed.
I think so.
Should say including soliciting information from the complainant and member in question. But again, it's Counselor Taylor's consensus.
That was very friendly.
I totally agree with you. I can see that. Taken a while to see it, but I can see it. Can we lose, lose that? Right, I think that's what we want.
Pretty bit better.
Substantially.
Right. So, now I think I'm comfortable in calling to question. The committee seek consensus to amend section eighteen point one point five to the manner on the screen. All fair. Thank you.
Oh, please.
No, I just administrative question, but.
Go ahead.
Um, so typically things like this, is this going to be vetted through our legal prior to, uh, passing this just to make sure that we're covering everything and I mean, miss anything or misworded anything?
Uh, through the chair, yeah, we will have a, get my review.
So I'll put myself in queue then. I guess seven point six. Um, it, it says members must respect that administration works for the town as a corporate body. It's not talking about an individual. It's talking about administration. All, and then it goes on to say uh, without undue influence or criticism um, from any members. I mean, when a, when a uh, recommendation comes forward, um, isn't that our job to be critical of the recommendations that come forward? Um, it's just the wording in there is, uh, you know, so where is the line from the perspective of a counselor when a, when a, um, a recommendation they don't agree with comes forward? I can see that this would be really important if it was talking about an individual, being critical of the individual. We're talking about a recommendation coming forward from an administrative body. And then it says we're not supposed to be critical of that. Um, it's a funny word, um, given I think that's our job, isn't it? Also, Sasha.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we did discuss this when we were reviewing the policy. Um, I think the important distinction is the word undue. The, the point that it's trying to make is that, uh, as, as a administration is an employee of the corporate body, it is their job to make sure that they're bringing a range of options. Uh, and that, uh, they shouldn't be subject to undue criticism for bringing forward those options, whether their recommend date, recommendations are supported by the individual or not. Yeah, take it for what it is.
Okay. Um, I, I just, uh, uh, my, my comment to that is, is, um, follows a little bit on, on what CEO Panasik said earlier and he used the word weaponized and, and it's it's again elephant room. It's been an issue. And I just, this should try to clarify and be as distinct as possible. And it's just, it's a funny word in there.
Michael, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, echoing similar to Counselor Stashing, uh, you just double check because I, I remember I looked before. Undue is, is, is unwarranted and excessive, okay? Um, uh, language and, and, and again, these are, um, we, we try to approach a lot of these from how do you action it? So if somebody was excessive and undue and, uh, then they can go back to seven point five and do an informal process, right? We always try to how to be actioned and, and if somebody is being undue, uh, it's debatable, but then it will go through the process of what, what it is or not. That was the concept.
Counselor Ross?
Yeah, uh, and, and I see where you're coming from, but I mean, past experience too. I think we've also got, you know, the informal, but we also do the mutual, you know, performance. We have ample opportunity to discuss it prior to, to get some understanding, but I, I, you know, I think there was some examples of that undue at some point. Uh, you know, it's one thing to criticize or to debate, but I think it's that, again, that unwarranted. I think it's also too that look into the public as well. What are we saying to the public? You know, during our discussions with them and are we criticizing, you know, the mem, uh, you know, the administration corporate body that way? So, uh, I'm comfortable with it, but I can see you, you got a point there for sure.
I mean, I'm not uncomfortable with it. I just like to have the conversation before it's an issue. Yeah. All right. Anything else? Counselor Race?
Thank you, sir. Just quickly, I'll tell you, I think this new revised, um, code of conduct is going to make all of us better. Well, Congress, I truly do. It is, um, it's, I hope everybody reads it really, really well. And it'll certainly make me a good counselor, so thank you.
Let's ensure it's a tool. It's a new keyword option and not a tool, so. Counselor Ross?
And, and I just want to, I, I agree with Counselor Race, but also the, the complaint forum, I appreciate uh, the group putting that in here as well and, and, and to Miss Mark's, uh, Mark as well, because, you know, uh, there was not really anything procedurally that way, uh, this having it though in form, this format is, uh, much appreciated. So, thank you. Don't want to use it, but I'm glad it's there. Thank you. So I'd like to actually move.
Chairs?
No, I'm just looking for that. Counselor Ross, yeah, there's no other change. I'm, uh, the, the, the committee direct administration to deliver the revised, I guess I should say revised and amended uh, by law number eleven twenty-four, Council Code of Conduct to the December twentieth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of council. Uh, as presented for first reading.
Were there any other comments related to the document before we? Thank you. All right, um, have we talked this one enough? Do you want to debate this motion? All right. So I will call to question the committee direct administration delivered a revised and amended bylaw eleven twenty-four council code of conduct to the December twenty, twenty twenty-two regular meeting of the council as amended for first reading. All in favor? Before we move on, I'd just like to say to the committee, thanks. That was, uh, that was a job well done. It's, the language is cleaner. It flows way better. So thank you. Um, all right, uh, now we are on to information item six point one, economic data of town of Hidden Website. CEO Panasik.
Uh, thank you through the chair to, uh, members of the committee. So we had a, um, a delegation at one of our council meetings that all discussed the, uh, some economic development data and, uh, uh, their pitch on putting that onto our website. So we wanted to just bring this forward as an information item at this to say that we do, we are under contract with a very similar organization right now. So we have identified, um, the pathways of getting to that on our websites, um, for, for council to review and, and the, uh, at this point, we're, we're not recommending any changes. Uh, we do have a contract that it's that expires September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, um, you know, just administratively speaking, if we did want to look at options at that point, I think that would be appropriate. If we did want to look at, uh, um, possibly changing um, the type of data that's put on our website earlier than that, we think, uh, we would seek counsel direction on that. But we do believe that, uh, much of what was presented by, uh, the, the provider was, uh, was included already into our, our data.
Counsel?
Sir, Sasha, Chair, uh, yeah, I appreciate that a lot of the information that was, uh, similar information was presented by City Vis at, at our regular meeting is, uh, is included, uh, already on our website and, uh, yeah, look forward to at some point in the future, having a discussion about what else might be included, but for the time being, I would like to, uh, uh, seek consensus for committee to accept the economic data on the town of Hidden Website report or information.
Well, that portion. All right, call the question. The committee accepts the economic data on the town of Hidden Website report for information. All in favor? That is passed unanimously. Uh, and then on to reporting, uh, council reports, boards and committees, uh, maybe I'll start to my left, Counselor Taylor.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Counselor Race?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Counselor Ross?
Yeah, just one matter, um, and my apologies, you'll hit County, uh, was supposed to attend their Christmas party. But a meeting popped up for the Hidden Youth Advisory Council, um, and it came up, it was a conversation that the admins had without the youth, but, uh, excited, uh, CEO Panasik actually brought this up in the, in our first meeting of the term and, uh, Debbie, uh, Duke and, uh, Heather Way took it forward. Basically, what we're looking at is some of the matters that are coming forward to council for decision, i.e. example from the twenty twenty-three budget, the slide. Um, what they're looking for is, is getting some soliciting some, uh, some, uh, feedback from the Hidden Youth Advisory Council to their thoughts on it. And that would then be included into the report that we would receive, uh, from, from that department. Um, and there was a number of other things that, uh, were also discussed. So, um, you know, it was a way of getting the youth involved and it giving them a chance to debate some of the things that, you know, they can bring then to, to council. So they won't be coming to report to us, but they will be discussing some of these things during our meetings and then uh, placed into the reports that administration brings to us. Some other examples also were things like what we are considering doing for candidate day. Um, and getting some, some soliciting some information from the youth on that as well. So that's the idea. So basically administration bringing to them, these are the different options that we're considering. What are your thoughts on it and, and having that conversation? So, um, you know, it's a different kind of look at things, uh, for the youth advisory council, but it'll get, I think, uh, you know, uh, spark them in other ways as well. So I'm looking forward to those future conversations. And that's all that's important. Thank you.
Mayor Michael. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, want to thank, uh, Yellowhead County for hosting Town of Hidden and Town of Edson, uh, for our Christmas dinner and looking to, uh, doing that as a, an annual thing that we once did. So that was great to attend. I had a waste management meeting where the main uh, topic of conversation, uh, a motion was passed to, um, build a, uh, cell, a larger cell, fourteen years, uh, at a cost of six million, which is only a fifty percent but two million dollar extra cost and the other option building a cell that would last about seven years. Uh, so the economy is a scale, uh, all over our financial impacts of this. So CEO Panasik, uh, will be working with administration on bringing that to council for decision, um, and any impacts to reserves, uh, specific to that account, but, um, that was the uh, decision the board would like to do to extend the life, uh, fourteen more years of, uh, an additional cell. And that's all for me.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick, I guess, a question and, and, but, because I believe you'd been part of that committee before, there was enough in the reserve to do the, the cell they were considering, and then there was an opportunity to increase it. So that money isn't currently in that reserve, so that's where we'll be looking into.
So that'll be part of the package, uh, if, if I may, sorry, swear. Uh, the amount of reserves is slightly over four million dollars. This cell is six million dollars. So the timing of it uh, may have be of, of concern and that's where, um, we could decide to, we want to delay this.
We could decide to, do we want to delay this or do we want to start it anyways and then we pay our appropriate portion. Uh, within a municipality for the the remaining amount. So, um, the answer to your question, there isn't enough of the six million is. Right, don't exactly quote me, but I think it was about four point three million in reserves, uh, for that cell currently. Uh, to date.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, and just very quickly, I guess, um, the the dinner, uh, with Yellowhead County, uh, and the town of Edson. Uh, went really well. And I think there's so much regional work we all do together that. That, that, um, getting together is really important and and the mayor took on that hint the host next year, so. It'll be a shorter drive. Uh, I missed the senior light tour, uh, last Wednesday because I did attend the inner meeting. Uh, so there was the introduction of the, uh, of the grant that was, uh. Uh, secured, uh, through the, through the chamber, um, and, um, there's a lot of, um. Uh, committed interested people now moving to to move this EMF concept forward. Uh, and with that said, there was a presentation there from Tourism Alberta and they're talking about these, uh. Uh, tourism destination zones. Um, so it's, it's the goal of of the Alberta government to move tourism. From ten to twenty point two billion dollars. To do that, all of the places that tourists go now, you can't double the people going to Banff and Jasper and all the other. They're looking to invest, um, uh, resources in helping to develop these other zones. Uh, and I think we're called the, uh, Canadian Northern Rockies. This is our zone. And for anybody who's interested, um, we've made a fairly significant committee in our investment in this regard, but on January sixteenth. Uh, um, Alberta Tourism is doing an open house here, uh, where they will discuss. Uh, plans for the Canadian Northern Rockies, uh, tourist destination zone. Uh, and I have nothing further. CEO Panasik.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I I don't have anything, uh. Additional to, to report on, uh, the action pending list in front of you, um. Please to announce that there are. Uh, a lot of complete items. The next time you see this report, it will be down to three pages.
Three page report will be down to three pages.
I believe it was. Eight.
It was nine.
It was nine pages, so. So in the last, um. In the last month, we have not, uh, a significant amount of these. It's a much man- more manageable, uh, document.
With that said, there still are some items on here that I don't quite yet. And there is some, uh, suggestion that, uh, these, some of them be extended and. When? Because I guess we have to do that. When, when's that coming?
Uh, so through the chair to, uh, members of the committee, we've, we just had this conversation with senior leadership team. We said, okay, let's, let's clean this up. Let's determine what has been completed. So that's what we've done. That brought us back to, uh, three pages. At this point, we do want to look through because a lot of these that are not completed have been on there for. Quite a while, so we need to either seek some clarity from council or we need to. Uh, rescind these because they they no longer be valid or or they are valid and, uh, and and we need to. Um, put some resources towards them to get them done, but, um, we're just getting our, our arms around it as administration. So we will be prepared, uh, possibly early new year to have this discussion and. Maybe, uh, recommend some, some amendments to that action, I think, list.
Anything further?
No.
All right, so, uh.
Uh, I just see it's coming up to eight o'clock, so I don't know. You want to make a motion to extend? We've got one.
Can I dictate that we work for seven minutes for free? What's the, uh, um. What is the la- is how much time do we need for this last item?
My name is Kurt Chair. It's mutual performance discussion, so it's. Self. Regulated. But if. Uh, I would actually like to move to postpone mutual performance discussion to next week's meeting. And we've been, if I could speak to, we've been here for four hours, have some pretty heavy conversation tonight. I don't think there's anything that's super critical to, uh. Talk about a mutual performance. And if there is, then yeah, I would just let me know with my motion, but. Uh, I I would move to, uh, postpone until next week.
Counselor Oz.
I'm not against that, but I do, I have nothing, but I'd look at our CEO. It would be the first one we have with our CEO. We haven't had a mutual performance since, so is there anything that our CEO? Would like to discuss with council and that, uh, means before or next week.
Uh, through the chair, uh, this would actually be my second. Part of one, but there's nothing, uh, pressing from administration that I want to bring up to.
Right, so, uh, we have a. A motion to postpone the mutual performance to the next, next week's meeting. All in favor? And. Motion to adjourn, there we go.
We have to vote on that, you know.
Oh, all in favor?